Probably five past six, so ten minutes. Well, we need to order two, uh, kind of change the look of the minutes. Some big one. I guess we'll do more motion on the minutes. I'll move to approve the minutes, but second. All right. All in favor? Any changes of direction? Finally. Okay, so election of officers.
You guys all have your bylaws with you?
Yeah, they were in the blue.
Yeah. Uh, page three, number four is election of offices.
Yeah, this thing says July, but I don't remember this.
October?
Yeah.
It was an odd time, I thought. And maybe it had gotten changed last time they got in, the bylaws got changed.
Oh, did you, we changed two years ago, I think.
In eighteen?
Yeah, you see, it was all signing in the pack when we did it.
And this one now is in, uh, July instead.
Yeah.
Well, makes more sense, I guess.
Is that when the appointments would come and change?
Well, this year was kind of a little bit, we had all the new members. That COVID, everything.
Certainly, yeah.
Messed up. So I guess we just have to figure it out.
Well, we did appoint people, officers, just so, you know, July have. And then we did, if they didn't want to be chairman at that time, we didn't.
Yeah, you're off, it's only a one year.
Is it?
Yeah, we'd do it in next July as well, too.
So we can give the point on it, and then, uh, this is terrible, we're waiting on the way. Would that be said, I nominate, uh, Chris Whitman.
So, last meeting, we just had a raise of hands of who didn't want to be chair. We had one quick hand go up, which, uh, was John. Chris, you've been on boards and committees, do you feel comfortable?
Yeah.
I don't have it posted on the agenda for offices tonight and stuff, but, I mean, it's been expected that we've been looking to do it anyways.
Well, I think, honestly, Ken, when you mentioned that last meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, definitely, we need a point to contact, uh, a leader for the pack, that's for sure. Gavin's looking for a second? Uh, it's supposed to be full members. John does. Any discussion?
Any further discussion, first you're comfortable with this?
You can quit at any time, you're only a volunteer, so. It is what it is.
So, all in favor of Chris Whitman being?
Chairman?
Chairman.
You can vote for yourself. Unanimous. Yeah, yeah. Move up from interim to full vice?
Yeah, all seconds.
Motion made and seconded.
All in favor?
Cool.
Want to, where you go up to executive?
Um, reading that, the exec, in the minutes or the bylaws, we probably should have changed it where it's really a paid position now, where, uh, the land use secretary went from just a code enforcement secretary to land use, technically it is Christina that does all that, and it did say she doesn't have to be a resident of the town, so. Yeah, I, I guess just until we clean up the bylaws, if you guys want to make a motion for that. Not a member of the board and the position does not require the town of Acton residency. Usually.
Doesn't have to be a member of the board, then?
No. Usually, we've always had, uh, somebody in the board who has good penmanship, just take notes, fill notes and stuff, but.
What's yours having?
We will just invite Virginia with her camera.
So I'm gonna, I just, um, make this, you know, the secretary.
Yeah.
Make it official.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea, myself.
What's the difference between the recording secretary and the executive secretary? That 3.4.
No, that's probably one of the first things we should do is, is go through and clean up these bylaws a little bit. Erase a lot of stuff that we don't need in there.
Well, initially, we had the executive secretary who signed the minutes at the meeting. Saying that that is more important, that that was. We had a couple of things, except, except, just again.
Right, the last time, we had Donovan, remember Donovan?
Yeah.
The stuff that after Donovan started, the chairman was doing some of the, for example, on the sidebar, should take down, names of everybody that was there, and stuff.
Right, that was another big team, I mean, that's a city of ours.
Yeah. And, uh, just that Christine just come in on something like that on Saturday.
Right, well, we have the camera there now, too.
Exactly, so. I, I think myself, Gavin, I think, and he's right, it will do the same thing again, the same will change in the last two years. Kind of picking the pot a little bit, maybe that will take away a little bit of the error of bylaws, so. Yeah, I, I don't get the need for something called executive secretary.
We all, we voted, we reviewed the minutes and approved them.
What, what's the, well, what happened? The bind we got in. Was the last year, the year before, um, at the last minute, the chairman could make the meeting, and the vice chair wasn't there.
Come on, please, Doug, come on. He wasn't at the meeting.
He wasn't at the meeting.
And Donovan wasn't there, so we had no officers.
We had, we had nobody to go and come to the meeting. And when, on this big conference, we remember Gavin, uh, he's the meeting of the executive secretary, and that's when maybe you leave him from the vice chair, then you go over the meeting. Well, we can address that in the bylaws. You know, it doesn't have to be the executive secretary, secretary, if the meeting, or the, for the, the month.
One of the best things is to just look at other towns and steal what they've got and bring them in for a bunch of examples and, in a workshop, or if we still remain at this level of activity, uh, do it at a regular meeting and just, uh, take a look at it and cut and paste and, and put something together.
Yeah, that's what I would think.
Well, the chairman and vice both miss needing, but there's still a problem.
Right, that's why I thought that the problem was, we didn't have anybody to run the meeting. Goodbye, we actually did have the chair, the vice chair, they told them to do that, and then they stopped. If it's nothing past that, then now we gotta meet, people are here. There's a little last meeting, you know, we have a couple of, we, we just wouldn't make.
It only really matters is if you've got a, a good hearing of some kind or something, you've got some business that the board has to attend to. If it's just simple stuff like we've been doing, the training and things like that, or just, um, easy stuff to start, it's not that big, but you need somebody to open the meeting and, and recognize people and.
Because it didn't need, um, uneven, anything doing stuff, we got it, as long as we're running the meeting, because we can chair, and you really get that job, man. Again, I go back to, you gotta make sure you do everything properly, because if you don't do it properly, and somebody has, uh, discontent towards the board, or somebody says you're maybe something like that, you didn't have the right to, you can hold that meeting, you have the right to do this, you have the right to do that. And, I mean, we'll be bylaws, we can address that. So we don't get into that again. It's good to work out the way to get, but, you know, probably never happen again, but we never thought it would happen the first time. You know, so. And sometimes we have half everything on our schedule to deal with. And, well, we meet only every two weeks, around people who spend a lot of money, and they get on the agenda, and they think they're gonna be done that night, and they're not going, they spend, uh, two weeks, and they're dealing with banks and contractors, and they're doing terms of what they have to do. I'll be back.
You're just buying me time for, uh, our keynote speaker to, to show up. Uh, I, I guess we just look at the bylaws and go from introduction on one, and go down through and see if anything jumps out to people. It does reference Robert's Rules of Order for a book, and these are just our, our bylaws too, I don't know how legal of a document if we try to hold to them or, or deviate from them.
When we did the, the warrant finance, um, policies and procedures, uh, there's a very, there's a very simplified Robert's Rules of Order, it's only a couple pages of basic, you know, if you did look at the book, it's about this, that. And that's how we work the warrant finance, and it gives you a little more latitude.
Yeah.
It's a, I forget the exact terminology that we use, but obviously, I didn't have the policy, pretty rough, you know, but I can get that, and, and it'll be simple if somebody is running the meeting.
Yeah.
And for people to understand the procedure will follow. The only issue I have are the bylaws. And, and this just happened recently, uh, this year, historically, and you see in the bylaws, the planning board has brought the names forward to the slot man, because the, I thought was always that you want somebody that is not able to work with the board, and you don't have somebody that's, you just have to figure out that, or that will lead to something, and then the board. So if all of the names were always presented to the slot man, but the planning board, the planning board, uh, chair, vice chair, and, and, and a few people, stuff like that, and there's three, uh, fruitful boards of the slot man, and it's been that, they've long regarded them as the planning board, and they're sort of, until this time. The parent board, uh, they informed the chair that they don't have to follow our bylaws, and they were wanting to, uh, appoint who they wanted to appoint, and it wasn't that good. And, so either, I guess what I'm saying, if it's a worthless line, if it's in there, if the slot man is gonna say they're not gonna follow the way the rules exactly offered, you might as well take it out. I think it's a good idea, I, I think it's always worked, uh, but this isn't what happened in the last year, because we said we're not, we don't pay what we pay.
Who, who's saying that sentence, you're saying?
This board's slot.
Didn't care, so, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding this, so, the board came up with, um, new members, and presented to the slot man, and they didn't accept it, and they.
No, they said, they said the board, it wasn't their place.
But, it's in the bylaws.
That's right, they said they don't have to accept our bylaws. That's what we said. But no matter what happened with the whole five members, uh, like, Tom, Jerry, Sir Chair, or anybody that, that didn't appear, whatever, and if it was that board name, so the slot, this is who we think is gonna be the best agents of the town, of the board, and, I mean, you have Gavin, for example, uh, I like picking on Gavin, anyway. Gavin's thoughts about the role of the environment and different things like that. We agreed a lot in the middle, but I'm, we have a phrase we don't, and that's one makes it good for Gavin and I to be on the board, because I look at something some way, it looks, it's the same thing a different way, and at least my experience on the planning board, it then has always been a very respectful, uh, discussion, and whether you end up winning or losing, you know, it isn't a personal, so I guess that's what I'm saying, you know, because Gavin isn't his. It's on passion, I have disagreed for thirty years, I thought it would be fair to lose, and, but, Tom's a great guy, and I respect Tom, and always have it done for the town, but that's the beauty of the planning board, um, kinda picking their own members, because you want an older person, a younger person, you want invited members, you want, you know what I mean, so when you're making these decisions for the town, hopefully you got opinions from all different places, and that was the purpose of why the planning board has always presented their own members to the board of the slot. But the board of the slot man wanted to appoint, uh, who would appoint? So.
Here he comes, I think.
All these guys, they hate it now.
I got your spot up here. I'm just doing shadow puppets for you.
So, they, uh, starting late.
I'm blending it on one eleven, traffic called one eleven. They're doing a big paving project here. Yeah, they're doing a big paving project.
Yeah.
But then, instead of doing themselves.
Do you have anything you want me to project, or?
I brought the hard copy and I was just gonna walk through.
Yeah.
I thought I'd spend most of the time on, uh, standards.
Yeah.
Really don't have a ton of presentations, more like.
Yeah.
Just walk through a little bit and ask some questions.
Real life, uh, expectancies, um, five of them are all brand new, and I've got two that have really, that have been on the board for a while, so.
You know, usually they're, so, Tom, you have the planning board, and then the planning board. Like, I can't give you the reason, but, but, everybody left, within a couple of weeks, a few people left, so. It was a very long time where we didn't have a board, and then, in fact, I think, it was, it was quite a period, but, it was all things, that they would, the recommendations. All the five people that were having on the board for ten years, Tom, all got on for three months, you know what I mean, and.
I was also, uh, trying to get into the other building.
I did, and that's why I left this one open before you sneak in and nobody would notice.
Yeah, oh, well.
That is why my whole thing is, if it's not, you know, it's gonna be, like, the day you might.
Bylaw discussion. Uh, Ben Smith is your consultant planner, North Star Planning, uh, Ben's just gonna talk, um, uh, findings and standards, and, uh, he's been doing it quite a while now, so I'll let you go from here, Ben.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate, uh, folks staying by while I was on my way over. Uh, my name's Ben Smith, and I'm with North Star Planning, as Ken had mentioned, I've, I've been working with the town, uh, since early, earlier in the year, and, uh, assisting with development review, uh, particularly site plans and subdivision applications, and I understand that, uh, you guys have been having a bit of an orientation session over the last few meetings, and have had a chance to talk a little bit about site plan review. I'd be happy to talk a bit more about that, but, uh, Ken had asked me to come in to, number one, say hello and introduce myself, uh, but also to talk a little bit more about, uh, subdivision review. So, unlike site plan, where the town has a lot of discretion on the review process and, uh, how the review is carried out and what the standards are, there's a state statute that, uh, talks about subdivision review. So that is a state law that's on the books, and it sets up the framework for how all communities in Maine review subdivisions. So within that framework, there is flexibility, but, uh, the framework is established in state statute. I'm not sure that, uh, this group has gotten hard copies of, of that law, but it, it might be something we could provide as a link, uh, for reference, it's certainly not something you need in front of you at every meeting, but it, it would be good to just be aware that there is that state framework out there. So within that framework, the town of Acton does have a subdivision ordinance, like many communities around the state, and that subdivision ordinance establishes the procedures for how reviews are conducted, as well as the standards for which, uh, the board reviews applications. So, um, you, you probably did talk a little bit earlier, just kinda backing up a step, the, the role of the board in the community is to really, uh, it's, it's almost quasi-judicial. You're here to review applications, and these are the rules in the subdivision statute, and the zoning ordinance that you use to do that. So, uh, this afternoon, or this evening, we'll go through, uh, I think at a very high level, you have these documents in front of you, um, we can walk through them, but I, I was hoping we could also have a bit of a discussion, if there are certain questions about any of the process or the standards that, uh, you as board members are gonna be using to make determinations on projects. So, unlike a, uh, building permit, where you come in, you work with the code officer, you get your permit, that's an administrative process, this is a board process where people will present information, the board will have a chance to ask questions, gather more information, and then you're basically making a judgment on projects, whether they meet the standards in the ordinance. And, uh, that's, that's how projects happen all over the state, and that's how they happen in Acton as well. So, are there any questions before we get in, or, or things that folks are hoping to get out of the discussion this evening?
I think we've done ten hours of ordinance, and nobody had a question yet, so.
So, with that in mind, I, I think I will go a little light on the ordinance and leave some time at the end for questions. Uh, my hope is, I, I, I think I walked in on a conversation about bylaws, uh, those, those are not ordinance, but they do establish procedures for, uh, how the board conducts sit walks, typically how the board will conduct public hearings and those kinds of things that aren't spelled out in the ordinance as part of the review, but how the board conducts its business. So, getting back to the ordinance, um, the, there's a number of articles, uh, I, I wanna focus on article ten, which is the performance and design standards. The first section of the ordinance really establishes the, uh, legal framework for the review, that, that's article one, purposes and statutory review criteria, authority and administration, and then it gets into, um, articles four, five, six, and seven, and article eight are really the administrative parts of the ordinance, it is helping the applicant understand, um, when you have a project, what does that project, uh, get classified as, what are the review stages? So, just like, uh, with a site plan, uh, there's different review stages. So, the, the first time an applicant will, will come before the board, it's, it's called sketch plan, and it's meant to be a very informal, low-cost, easy conversation with the board, for the applicant to get some direction on a project, to understand what the town's concerns might be, and understand what the issues are with the site or the use, uh, but it's also a chance for the board to get a little bit of an understanding, uh, from the applicant about what they're proposing, what kind of timeframes and those kinds of things. Projects are not always gonna be engineered at that point, again, it's meant to be an easy, uh, low bar, someone can come in with a drawing that's, sometimes it's hand drawn, sometimes it's drawn to scale, sometimes they will have a surveyor or an engineer prepare that for them. At, at the next step, the preliminary plan review, uh, that, that's when the application's a little more fleshed out, uh, the application, applicants had a chance to think about these performance standards, we're gonna talk about in a minute, uh, if they are in a situation where they are gonna be requesting waivers for many of those standards, or the submission criteria, that's, that's typically where the board will have those discussions at the preliminary plan stage. And in many communities, the next stage, the final plan, uh, is really kind of crossing the Ts, dotting Is, ensuring that other, uh, outside agency permits are either in place or well on their way, um, if there are things, uh, like conditions of approval, uh, we can talk a little bit more about that in a moment, um, those are typically established and formalized at the final plan review stage. Uh, so those are the, the review stages, and the timing on those stages are laid out in the ordinance, and we can, we can certainly talk about that in more detail, but, uh, the, the timelines in the ordinance are in place, uh, to give the applicant some assurance that the process is gonna move along in a timely manner, but it's also in place to let the applicant know that if they present a, for example, a preliminary plan, uh, and then let a year or two go by, that they're gonna have to start the process over, because there, there are things that, uh, could have changed in state statute or in the local ordinance that they'll need to react to in their, in their plan. So those timelines are, are good, uh, for both the applicant as well as the community. So, that brings us to article ten, the performance and design standards, and these are, and before I get into that, I do see a question in the back.
Just back out a little bit, those four procedures, those procedures we talked about. I've learned myself that, that's what's brought to the board, it's very important terminology you use, when you, um, those sketch plans, for example, if you, you accept a sketch plan, but you're not approving the sketch plan, and it goes, kind of like that, all the way through, I don't know if these guys really, you know, how important that is.
The, uh, the differences between these review stages, uh, and I think that's what we're talking about, is, is, again, the whole idea of a sketch plan being informal, uh, a chance to provide guidance, a, when someone submits a sketch plan, it's, uh, running a project by the board, the board is not making any formal decisions, they're not making approvals, they're not granting waivers, they're not doing any of those formal decision-making things that they would need to vote on, and that includes, uh, you know, you can't approve a sketch plan, because in state statute, the, the clock doesn't start ticking, uh, with these timelines, I'd, I'd kinda. timelines I kind of mentioned very briefly, until a preliminary plan is submitted. But it's important for the community to basically acknowledge the sketch plan and authorize the development and submission of a preliminary plan. And very often, a board will vote to accept a sketch plan or to authorize a preliminary plan. But at that point going forward, motions are often framed as, you know, vote to approve or to approve with conditions as opposed to something less than that, which might be to accept a sketch plan. So it's a formality. It's definitely getting into a few layers down from the things that we can talk about, but I think that as we go through this, if there are particular questions, I'm going to try and stay up here initially, but we can drill down to any of these concepts in the ordinance or the state statute as we go through the evening. Thanks for that. So there's a number of these Performance and Design Standards in the ordinance on Article 10. I'm going to turn to page 28 in the ordinance. So 10 dot 1 is for the basic subdivision layout. And there are all of these standards, I'll back up just one more moment, all of these standards are things that the board will need to make a finding on in order to approve a plan or to approve a plan with conditions. All of these standards need to be met, or a waiver from the standards needs to be voted on and granted in order to satisfy all of the conditions within the ordinance. So we'll walk through what these conditions are, and if you have questions as we go about what that means or why it's important, we can talk about that. But the idea here is that at the end of a subdivision review process, when the board makes a motion and everybody is raising their hands in a vote, you will be making that vote based on your decisions on how the project stacks up against these performance standards. Make sense? The state statute sets up the framework. The board, there's also a, Article 12 talks about waivers, and we'll talk about what is waivable and under what conditions the board should consider waivers. I will preface that part of the discussion by saying waivers are exceptions. You know, the definition is basically an exception from the standards, and it really should be something that the board views as an exception. There are some, we'll talk more about waivers in a moment, but waivers are definitely not the norm, and they shouldn't be the norm when it comes to. So when we start here, we're going to talk about what the standards are, and then we can talk maybe a little bit more about Acton's experience with waivers and under what conditions and those kinds of things.
I think that's a good question. We've been looking at the zoning ordinance the whole time. The zoning ordinance, we can't waive. The zoning board has that authority. And that's why it's kind of tough when you've got your conditional use, your site plan regs, and good neighbors in that zoning ordinance, none of it's waivable. And in some of the last projects, it just really wasn't feasible to enforce some of those standards. It just didn't make sense, but it's in the zoning ordinance, so it was much harder for the board to navigate through those.
Yeah, and without going too much deeper into it, there have been a number of examples in my experience where communities find that applicants are requesting waivers from a specific standard or a couple of specific standards over and over again. And that can be a signal that the ordinance standard needs to get adjusted, for whatever reason. Maybe it's too strict, or maybe it's not worded correctly, or maybe it's not important to the community the way it once was, and, you know, the common practice is to do something else. So rather than grant waivers for the same thing over and over again, and I don't know if that happens here, frankly, but those are the kinds of things that I immediately talk to town staff about, saying that's probably worth looking at the ordinance wording, maybe an ordinance change to make sure that the applications are really being put together in a way that meets the needs of the town.
We'll see that in our office quite a bit. If people have to keep going to the zoning board for variances for a certain thing consistently, then we change the ordinance, and now the zoning board doesn't need it all for setbacks on small lots on the lakes and things like that. So, which would be, when we bring that situation to you guys, you guys would look at it and then propose a zoning change and then move forward to town meeting to get the ordinances changed. Even though you guys may not be dealing with it, the book is yours to see the changes through.
So the Article 10 Performance and Design Standards have to do with basic subdivision layout, and there's a number of bullet points here about lots, utilities, monuments, how those things are placed in a subdivision, how they are laid out. Sufficient water is a standard that has to do with domestic water supply, so water that you'd use inside your house for laundry and showers and cooking.
Do you see that ever being a problem for rural subdivisions? Because most times, you're just going to get a letter from somebody that drills wells and says, "We'll drill those wells."
I have not seen it on private wells.
Yeah, city water, city sewer, you'd get the water district involved.
So the state standards basically say, there is one that talks specifically about water, and the state statute says, for all of these, it's basically subdivision must have sufficient water supply for the project. The project will not cause undue traffic on public streets. So they're very general yes or no kind of questions, but the local ordinance puts in place, well, how do you answer that question? How do you decide if it's going to be unreasonable, or how do you decide if the water supply is sufficient? That's what's spelled out in the book in front of you. So when you look at, for example, 10 dot 2 on page 29 for sufficient water, the question the board will ultimately need to answer is, does the subdivision have sufficient water for the needs of the subdivision? Yes or no? But if you look down through, it'll tell you what you need to look at and maybe what the applicant needs to provide or need to address in order to help you make that yes or no decision. When I said earlier that the planning board is a quasi-judicial board, you're making decisions on how applications meet the standards, it's not up to the board to try and track down information, or up to the board to do detective work and find these things out. The board asks questions to clarify, and it's up to the applicant to provide those answers and help make sure that the board has the information they need to make those determinations on the project. That's the simple version. It often involves a lot of work with town staff and trying to pull that information together, make sure that the board has information in your packets. But ultimately, when you get to the meeting, you're going to be looking at these standards and asking those kind of yes/no, how do you meet the standard? How do you meet that standard? So using sufficient water, 10 dot 2 is an example, it talks about water supply when the subdivision is not within a designated area for public water. It talks about how the lot design shall permit placement of wells and subsurface wastewater disposal, so septic systems. How do the wells and septic systems relate to each other? Is there enough space to lay these lots out? So you can get both. It talks about if there's going to be a central water supply as opposed to individual wells on a property.
Do you usually see septic locations on the plans, or areas for no well locations or the well radius, or both, or?
Not typically, unless the lots are very small.
Yeah.
Sometimes in a cluster subdivision, or other areas where you've got very small lots and people are not on public water or sewer, those locations become elements of the approval so that, you know, in this ordinance, it says you need to have a test pit, a passing test pit to show you can get septic in. But generally, the code officer, the septic designer are going to, you know, make sure it's in the vicinity, but they're not out there with a tape measure. If it is an element on the subdivision plan, they will be out there with a tape measure. And there are things that, you know, well exclusion zones or septic, they can show a specific point. They can show an area. So I guess the long, the short version to your question is that not, they're not typically, but there are occasions where the board could reasonably ask for that.
Yeah, yeah. Especially in our cluster subdivisions. We had one on the Lebanon line, and it was, I think, 150 acres or so, all forested. The developers are out there just trying to lay the lots out, and then they've committed to septic locations, and 20 years later, they're building on them, and it doesn't make any sense to put the septic there. I have to pump to put it there. Can't I just gravity there? And it's like, it's on the plan. So the more freedom we have implementing the plan makes it easier, but then you have the nitrate plumes going into the ground, and, you know, there was engineering, so things are there for a reason quite often, too.
So in those situations, and we'll talk about revisions to plans, you know, either based on conditions in the field, or maybe a few years go by, or people want to do different things than what the original subdivision was approved for. It is very possible, people do it all the time, to bring subdivision amendments in front of the board or revise plans. So that is, you know, pretty standard board business as well, looking at previously approved plans. Sometimes they're only a couple of years old, sometimes they're 50 years old. But the idea of locking down specific elements, I've seen it with stormwater buffers, showing those and having, you know, making sure those are marked on the plan as well as in the field. Those become elements of the subdivision approval. So we'll talk about what that approval means in a little bit, but if it's shown on the plan, then the builder is responsible for making sure that those things happen the way it's approved.
Like you say, as the plans go over time and owners change from house to house to house, all of a sudden, that little intent in the ground, which was a stormwater area, is now filled for a garage. And it just, it doesn't take long, and 20, 20-something years go by, and the plans deviate.
Absolutely. One of my favorite examples of that was, there was a single lot in an approved subdivision that was, you know, two or three times bigger than the other lots in the subdivision because someone wanted a dirt bike track for their kid. And that worked great as long as they lived there, but when they moved and, you know, one or two owners later, they said, you know, "We could, this is way bigger than it needs to be. Let's split that off, and we'll put another house in the subdivision." And that required a subdivision amendment to create a new lot and account for the stormwater and traffic and those kinds of things from that new lot in the subdivision. And it was pretty neat. It was a stormwater feature as well that got turned into a dirt bike track. So the idea here, as we go through, and I won't go through every single one of these line by line the way we did for water, but I want you to know that there are, it's spelled out in the ordinance, you know, what you need to know in order to make that yes or no decision on whether they meet the standards or not. And it is perfectly appropriate for the board to ask for more information in those times where you feel like they haven't fully addressed the standard, or it's not clear, maybe on the plan or in the submission materials that go along with the plan, how they do that. A lot of the work in between planning board meetings involves communications from the town staff, working with the applicants, or someone like me, working with the applicants and staff to make sure that the submissions that they do make are as complete as possible, and that they're providing as many of the answers as they can, so that when you get to the meeting, you're having good focused discussions, rather than saying, "Where's this? Where's this?" Any questions at this point? So as we go through, these standards, to a very large degree, reflect what's in the state statute. They will be helping you understand what applicants need to be providing in order to make these decisions on the standards in the ordinance. So when we talk about standards, we're talking additionally going down through the list, erosion and sediment, and impact on water bodies, that is erosion control has to do with clearing and construction activities. Sewage disposal is 10 dot 4, and that has to do with test pits and locations and soils, you know, showing the board that there are adequate soils and spacing to get safe septic disposal on every lot. Solid waste is trash and recycling, so providing some sense to the board how that's going to get taken care of in a subdivision. Sometimes it's private haulers, you know, it's up to every person in the subdivision to contract. Sometimes certain subdivisions will provide dumpster locations in a more, you know, certain types of development, and that's something that the board should be aware of. 10 dot 6 is impact on natural beauty, aesthetics, historic sites, wildlife habitat, rare and natural areas, and public access to the shoreline. This is a combination of kind of cultural, aesthetic components that the state requires, as well as environmental information that the state requires subdivisions to take into account. There are, when a subdivision is proposed, they will be providing information on deer wintering areas, wetlands, vernal pools, if there's significant wildlife habitat like places where shorebirds like to nest, or bald eagle nests, those kinds of things that need to be accounted for as part of the application. But there's also things like, typically, it'll say, and I'm looking for exactly where it does say, but things like stone walls, significant stands of trees, old cemeteries, those kinds of things that are not environmental restrictions that the DEP would regulate, but things that could be important to the community. Those sometimes get mapped or identified in a comprehensive plan process. There are also things that should get considered by folks who are going to be doing subdivision projects in town. Included in this, and this is quite a long standard, because it is so broad, it talks specifically about preservation and natural beauty and aesthetics. It talks about retention of open spaces and natural historic features, protection of significant wildlife habitat, which is all capitalized, that's a state definition. Not all wildlife habitat is regulated by the state as significant wildlife habitat. Protection of important shoreline areas, open space and common land. And those are the categories of things, and under each one of those categories, there's individual standards. So there are only a few left here. Conformance with zoning ordinance and other land use ordinances. This is the shortest performance standard. It's basically saying, does this meet the zoning ordinance, the dimensional and the good neighbor standards that Ken had talked about? Does it meet, match up, or is it in conflict with any other municipal plans? Financial and technical capacity is the ability of the developer, the applicant, to carry out the project as it's approved. So do they have the financial resources to build the road and the infrastructure required for this? How are they going to finance that? And do they have the technical capacity? Are they going to be doing the work themselves? Have they hired engineers? Or, you know, what are their plans for getting the work done if it's approved? 10 nine is impact on groundwater quality and quantity. This is different from sufficient water. Sufficient water is what you're taking out of the ground. Is there enough of it? And is it clean? That's sufficient water. Groundwater quality and quantity is what's going back into the ground. So is there any hazardous chemicals or materials? Are they going to be paving over a large significant aquifer in town? Make sure that groundwater quantity is, has to do more with getting water back into the ground. Make sure that groundwater quantity is, has to do more with getting water back into the ground and the quality is, is that water going to be clean when it goes into the ground? Flood plane management is 10 10. And that is largely driven by federal mapping of flood planes. And in particular, you may have heard or had some experience with a hundred year flood plane. That's a pretty common measure of flood risk. That's what FEMA uses for their flood maps and insurance. Understanding where that is, is important when it comes to subdivision review. If there's any of that mapped on the, on the project area. This is called out separately as another environmental concern. But 10 11 is identification of any wetlands. You know, typically it's easy to tell where the rivers and streams and brooks are. Although as you get smaller and smaller order of water, especially when you get to very small brooks or sometimes intermittent brooks, you need oftentimes a professional to go out and make some determinations on what gets counted as a brook. The town has its own shoreline zoning protections that apply certainly to lakes and other large surface waters. But there's also shoreline zoning for brooks and rivers and those kind of smaller water bodies that needs to be accounted for in a subdivision plan. And wetlands also need to get delineated. And that, there are wetland delineators who will go out and flag those in the field for the engineers and surveyors to put on the survey. Stormwater management is one of the big ones. This is something that impacts every single project. You may have been thinking of subdivisions or projects as we go through the process here when we talk about, well, groundwater might not be an issue on this one, but it might be for this one. Natural features or wetlands, you know, some places you can tell when you drive by are very wet and others don't seem to be. But no matter where it is or how large of a project it is, it needs to address stormwater. And the larger the project is, the higher the bar and the more permitting levels that project's going to need to meet. So at a certain level, project, it's something that the town can do on its own. Medium sized projects need to get state approvals. And some of the largest projects require Army Corps of Engineering approvals as well. So I think in Acton, you certainly have seen some of those larger ones that require a very stringent stormwater review based on the amount of wetlands impacted and the amount of stormwater impervious area that's, that's part of a project. The other important thing to think about when it comes to stormwater is where the project is in relation to great ponds. Ponds and water bodies that are over 10 acres. There are phosphorus standards. So stormwater is all about treating the, the amount of runoff from a site and, and keeping that commensurate with the pre-development condition. So that you don't have a lot more water, the quantity of water leaving the site is not going to be greater than when it, before it's developed. But it's also about the quality of that water. So making sure that when water does go into the ground or if it does go to a well end or leave the site, that it's going to be treated and clean. So that's especially important when you're in the watershed of a great pond, as the state calls it, a lake that's more than 10 acres is classified as a great pond. And they need to meet the phosphorus standard, which is an extra level of treatment to make sure that the water leaving the subdivision site is going to be clean. And it's, it's more work to calculate. It's typically more interventions on the ground, like slowing the water down, treating it, making, making sure it gets filtered and cleaned so that phosphorus is the nutrient that concerns DEP the most is not getting into lakes. There's some standards around cluster development here as well. So not every subdivision is going to be a cluster subdivision, right Ken?
The boards in the past has always pushed for cluster. And if there's a reason why not, then you could go the other route. But it's always primary been the first, first line.
I think that the philosophy behind cluster subdivisions is, is that when, when you look at the design and the layout of the subdivision, by having smaller frontage requirements and smaller lot sizes, you can cluster the development into a certain area or a couple of different areas on a property in exchange for leaving the rest of the property undeveloped or open space. So that if you had, for example, a 50 acre property, instead of having 25 houses spread evenly over that property, you'd have 25 houses in a corner of that property and have the remainder of that land be relatively untouched, undeveloped. So that has advantages for the community when it comes to stormwater, less impervious area. It has advantages to keeping that larger chunk of property open when it comes to wildlife habitat. It frankly has advantages for applicants and developers, people who build subdivisions, because it typically means shorter roads, less infrastructure for this, for what is essentially the same number of homes.
Does that become prominent, but does that attach with the rest of the land? So 20 years from now, somebody else owns a land and wants to, you know, cat house it somewhere. And the other three projects that haven't been built on?
It is permanent open space and it's recorded on the, on the face of the plan itself. I'm not sure, honestly. There are some times when that land is owned by the homeowners association, like a private road, when someone builds a private road, the ownership of that road, the responsibility for maintaining that road goes to the homeowners. Many cluster subdivisions have that open space remain the responsibility of the homeowners association. In some instances, it's transferred in fee, meaning that land is actually given to someone or an easement is given to someone like DEP or a local land trust or, or other entity that would be basically responsible for enforcing any restrictions on that open space. Number one, making sure that there's, it stays open space. But if there's things like trash or structures or someone's built some trails, you know, those kinds of things would be the responsibility of whoever holds that easement. Otherwise, it's, it's something that the homeowners association would have to.
This was Eagle's face off a hopper road. This is the, the first subdivision, the second. This is the conservation lane here, the open space here for the, on the first one. And then this is the, the second area of open space on that. And there, and see, the board just did one on same page as well. And this is plantation way where this was a subdivision. And once you approach the developer with it, because originally this road was going to go all the way back here, once the developer realized his road was half as long, his utilities was half as long, and it put all the houses right into one block. Yeah, they're all right in 10 acres, the 10 houses, basically. That left this whole area here for open space. And if these were all five acre lots that all the way went up through, then this large area for the animals to be, the deer yards and things like that wouldn't exist. It'd all be in the backyards of everybody's house. So, and ideally is these start matching up with other open spaces too as well so we can create a, a larger corridor of the, the conservation lands.
I think that first example you showed had a couple of open space parcels right next to each other.
Yeah, yeah.
That's one of the, you know, potential benefits of cluster subdivision. So I think it's a, and it's not mandatory, right Ken?
Cluster?
Cluster is a preferred.
Yeah.
So I, I think that you will see cluster subdivisions during your time on the board. That is really the philosophy behind those kinds of standards is so that, you know, on a lot by lot basis, as development happens, people split lots off all the time and create new homes. This allows for a thoughtful process. If it's going to go to the planning board and get reviewed and the board's going to be looking at water, septic, how the road's built, where the wetlands are. It really can allow for folks to be a little creative with how they lay out the roads and subdivision to preserve some of these things that are important to the town. So there's only a couple left and, and the next one is 10 14, compliance with timber harvesting rules. This is reflective of state liquidation harvesting definition in the subdivision statute at the state level. That has to do with large properties. I'm not sure, it's, it's not a, I will say as a blanket statement, it's not a common issue in areas, say, south of Augusta. It was written into the statute for larger, you know, hundred, hundreds of acres property where certain real estate investors were coming in, clearing the whole property and then putting it on the market within a very short amount of time. That is liquidation harvesting. It's not very common around here. And I'm not sure, maybe Ken, you could talk about local experience with that if there's any issues. I would be surprised if there were.
It's retained the five years.
Right. So that, that's, it's really, you know, property owners do have the right.
If they could have sold it by now, would have. It's been on the market for several years.
Okay. I mean, and this is, this is a balancing act that the state did when they went through. They, they, they didn't feel it was right for property owners to liquidate the, you know, a significant value of the property is in timber for those larger properties where the land is cheaper and the properties are much larger. You can probably imagine rural parts of the state where almost all of the value, the vast majority of the value of land is in the timber that's on the land. And when that is liquidated and the land is transferred out, it's not a, a good land management or stewardship of the property. It's a very different situation in Southern Maine where properties are smaller, property values are higher and those kinds of things. I do know that there's a lot of working force in, in Acton. So it's something to be aware of, but it's generally not an issue, at least is envisioned through those state standards. So there is some wording in here that would talk about that, but it really references the liquidation harvesting statute. And then the, the final one is 10 15, traffic. So just like stormwater is one of the big ones, traffic is one of the big ones. And you, you may not feel like traffic is a significant issue in Acton, or maybe you do. Maybe certain roads, certain times of the day, it is. But it is by far one of the most technical standards that an applicant has to meet. So just like with stormwater, you will see stormwater plans that are very thick. They're bound, thick reports with a lot of calculations and a lot of design work. Traffic can be that way as well. And I think there's less calculations with traffic. But as you see as we go through, part of what's in these standards is some very technical specifications on how roads get built, different kinds of roads, turnaround areas, you know, how thick the gravel needs to be, how steep the sides of the road are and those kinds of things. So those start on page 42 is the traffic conditions and streets. There's some general standards and general access standards. Has to do with intersections and street, intersections and driveways, some spacing requirements. And then it gets into C, general internal subdivision street standards on page 43, where again, not too technical at this point, but it talks about minimizing hazards to drivers on roads, to cyclists, street naming, signage, street lighting. But then on page 44, it gets into specific access and street design standards. And this is where it starts to reference engineering manuals. It starts to talk about state permitting requirements for developments over a certain size. Access control is, is about spacing of entrances along roads. It has to do with minimum site distance for access. So when a new subdivision street is proposed, coming off of a new road, understanding how far you can see any of the direction is part of the traffic review based on the speed of the traffic on that road and the types of traffic. Making sure people have basically enough distance to see so that when they pull out, they, they have time to do so safely. There are requirements for high volume access and requirements for medium volume access. These are typically larger subdivisions or commercial subdivisions, which I don't think there's a lot of in Acton. But the standards are in place so that if there were to be such a development proposed, the board would have something to use for guidance. And then on page 47 is where it gets into the street design and construction standards, which is the, how do you build a sidewalk? How do you build the road? How do you build it to a private road standard versus a public road standard? And that continues for several pages. And then it gets into, you know, that's basically the end of the performance standards. Those, that's the range of things that the board will be asked to make decisions on. And it is up to the applicant to provide plans and to provide submission materials that show how they're going to meet all of these requirements. So some are relatively easy. You could answer in a cover letter with a, you know, maybe a paragraph. Others are going to require some math and maybe a professional design, professional to assist. As we go through, article 11 is performance guarantees. And this is, you know, after the approval, after a project is approved, a performance guarantee is required to ensure that the project gets built the way it was approved. So this talks about the, the purpose of the guarantee. It talks about the form that that guarantee would take as a letter of credit or escrow account. But it's basically money that the applicant or the developer puts up to make sure that the public improvements, the streets, the stormwater, if there's street lights, if there's public utilities, any of those things to, to make sure that they're built properly. And when they've been inspected and signed off on, the guarantee is released. So that is something that is in the subdivision ordinance. It's typically not something the board would be weighing in on. The amount of the guarantee is usually determined by the applicant. The form of the guarantee, that's a pretty administrative kind of process that happens in the town office. But it's important to know that for projects that are going to be proposing public infrastructure, that there's a guarantee process in place. And then we get to article 12, which is.
Why doesn't the applicant set the amount?
Based on the design, um, they provide a, uh, an itemized list of construction values and this is, this is how it works in general. And maybe Ken, if you want to weigh in, uh, in a second, that would be great. But the idea here is that the applicant's designing the project, very often, uh, especially when an engineer is doing the project, uh, they'll estimate quantities of materials, estimate the amount of earthwork required, um, lengths of pipe, you know, any, any, anything that's going into the public improvement. And there's a dollar amount associated with each one of those items. So they provide that to the town. The town will check that and say, yes, this is a reasonable guarantee amount. And then the, the form of that guarantee, say, say it's a million dollars. They can, uh, put an escrow account, so put a million dollars in the bank and have the town listed as, uh, the beneficiary of that. They could get a letter of credit, which is basically a, it's very similar to a loan. They would go to a bank or a credit union, financial institution, go through the process of securing that letter of credit so that, uh, in the event the town needed to call that letter of credit, they'd have the ability to do that.
But the, the amount then is, is based on those anticipated construction costs?
Absolutely. It's different for every project.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep. Uh, it's very conceivable that there are subdivision projects that would not require a performance guarantee uh, and others that, uh, you know, it, it absolutely makes sense. And in fact, it, it can be critical when you have, for example, many homes going in on a whole network of streets uh, to make sure that, uh, those are going to be built in a timely manner, safely, make sure that the stormwater is functioning. Um, and I've seen a number of examples where, uh, you know, that performance guarantee has been critical to making sure that a project gets built and they're like are legitimate environmental issues or public safety issues. And that's, that's exactly what the guarantee is meant to head off from happening.
We had problems with the letter of credits, two thousand six, two thousand eight, when the banks were disappearing. We had no, no one to chase for it. So we prefer the escrows.
Yeah.
Cause we have cash on hand.
Cash is always acceptable at every town office. I, I think, um, some communities will have, um, either in the ordinance or in the letter of credit paperwork, uh, requirements, um, yeah. So a lending institution with offices in the region, uh, the intent of that, I'm sure was to make sure that it, you know, a local bank or a larger regional bank with some local presence. But, um, there were a number of examples back in that time ra- timeframe of the financial crisis where people were using mortgage companies to provide letters of credit or, um, venture capital kind of, uh, less secure than a uh, financial institution like you'd consider a bank or a credit union to be. And when those organizations are gone, the town doesn't have, or did not have a recourse to, to get the performance guarantees if they were required. So some, some towns will have, you know, a little more direction about letter of credit in the ordinance and some just address that through practice. And depending on the size of the project, I've seen plenty where people just come drop off a check and say, the work's going to be done in two weeks. I'll, don't cash this check. I'll pick it up in two weeks. So it can vary, uh, from multimillion dollar letters of credit to twelve thousand bucks and a check that never gets cashed. But it's there to protect the town's interests and the environment and to protect the interests of future residents who are going to be using those roads and, uh, other infrastructure.
A lot of it's as simple as they never put the pins in for the lot. And then the homeowners are, you know, ten years later trying to figure out where their lot lines are. So we've always required the engineer of record, the survey of record to write a letter saying the plan's built just like my, my as per design. So we at least know the pins are in, the, the roads have been built to their standards. Stormwater is in and functionable.
It, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Just having a punch list.
Cause at, at one point you want the roads paved and done, but on the other point, they've got twenty houses to build. So they're going to unload the excavator on the brand new street that you just paved because you made them, but yet they're damaging the streets. So, you know, base course now and final after, we usually have a trigger of so many houses. Uh, you know, no certificate of occupancies until this, this and this is done. And then, then we'll start issuing COs, but you, you've got to have something remaining to guarantee that, that top coat of pavings, the, the final stuff's done.
And, and some towns will, especially for roads that are potentially going to be offered for public acceptance, uh, even, you know, like the performance guarantees to make sure it's built properly, but then they'll have a, uh, another guarantee to make sure that it, it stands up for a year or at least over winter. So that next spring you don't have a bunch of cracks popping up through a brand new road that the town is about to take or has taken. Um, and then, and then we get to waivers. There, there was a question about waivers earlier in the night. Uh, there, there's two kinds of waivers. Um, there's a, actually there's, there's three kinds of waivers. There's waivers for submission requirements. So, uh, in those earlier articles we talked about, uh, just kind of breezed over articles three, four, five and six, uh, where it talks about those levels of review. So for a sketch plan, it says what you need to submit for a sketch plan. And preliminary plan has a list of submission requirements for the preliminary plan. The applicant has a right to say, um, this particular, uh, piece of information is not applicable to my project and I request not to submit that. And then the board can make a decision on, um, whether or not they need to submit that are not based on their request. So that's a waiver from submission requirements. There's a waiver from, uh, improvements, which is those performance standards. So if, um, for example, an applicant wanted to, the ordinance might require eighteen inches of gravel in a road and they could say, well, there's good gravel under this road based on the excavation work we've done, we want to put twelve inches of new gravel on top instead of eighteen or fifteen inches instead of eighteen. Um, that could be the basis for a waiver request. And it is up to the applicant, uh, as you read down through this, to demonstrate that, uh, the waiver is not going to be resulting in, uh, any issues for public health, safety or welfare. It's not going to be inappropriate or inadequate, uh, for connecting facilities to proposed subdivision utilities and streets. There's a number of things. So just like you've got performance standards that you're kind of measuring the application against, this provides you a little direction. So when someone says, uh, the ordinance says I need to, um, put a street light in at the end of this road, but I don't want to and here's why. And we think it will make a better project or it's going to avoid a detrimental situation. Uh, and these are my reasons for requesting the waiver. The, the board has the ability to grant waivers to avoid, uh, larger problems, to make projects, uh, better fit the landscape. Um, but it's up to the applicant to submit that, uh, information. Uh, parking, uh, is a common waiver request in a lot of communities, uh, that I work with. Either based on the number of parking spaces required or the size of the parking spaces required. This is more typically for site plan. There's no parking standards in, uh, in this, but it's a good example of a waiver where, uh, someone might say, your ordinance requires spaces that are ten feet by twenty feet, but I would like to propose spaces that are nine by eighteen. So it's smaller than your ordinance would otherwise require, but here's why we want to do it. Here's the rationale. It has stormwater implications, got grading implications. Or they could say, you know, okay, we can do ten by twenties over here, but on this side of the project, we want to do smaller ones. So there's different, uh, it's not all or nothing with waivers. Uh, I think that when people, uh, provide their rationale, if they can show why they're deviating, instead of just saying, I don't want to put in streetlights or I don't like, no one's ever going to use these sidewalks, so I'm requesting a waiver from building the sidewalk. That's not really good rationale for a waiver in my mind. But if they were to say, we, we don't want to put in a sidewalk and, on this location and here's why, it's because of a steep drop off or it's because it's going to require clearing too close to a stream or those other kinds of things. Those might be mitigating factors that the board would say, okay, instead of building a thousand feet of sidewalk, you know, you can build seven hundred or please put the sidewalk on the other side of the street or something like that. Uh, but that becomes, uh, a conversation where the board will ultimately be voting on whether or not to grant a waiver. And that is a, a decision that the board needs to make with a formal vote. That would appear on the face of the plan as well. So that when, uh, Ken goes out or the code officer or the town's consulting engineer, someone goes out and they're looking for, you know, the streetlights, they'll see on the plan that that was a waiver that was granted and they should not look for streetlights on that project. Um, and then there's a waiver for procedural steps. Um, I, I would imagine that this is a less common kind of waiver request, Ken. Do you want to talk about this one?
Yeah, we haven't dealt with that very much.
And generally, um, it, it looks to me like it has to do with projects, if it's just a division of land where you're not going to be building a street or adding new impervious area and, and saying, you know, I, I don't need a stormwater permit because I'm not building anything or clearing any land. It's just lines on a map. Uh, that would be a waiver of procedural steps in, in the town's ordinance. Um, any questions about waivers? It's not uncommon to get waiver requests. Uh, not every project will request a waiver, but it's not uncommon to get a waiver request on, on certain projects. I, I've seen some projects that request multiple waivers and there's nothing wrong with that on the face of it. Uh, as, as long as the applicant is making a case, providing some rationale on why that waiver is important for the project, how it would make the project better or avoid, uh, a, a scenario where it would be more harmful than the benefit of whatever they're requesting the waiver from. The specific standards are listed in the ordinance, but that's generally uh, what you'd be asked to make a decision on for a waiver.
One of the common waivers we'll get are contour lines. They don't want to go down to two or three feet. They want to stay at ten or, or something. And if it's a flat desert, then the board's usually okay with that. But, uh, it, cause it, it takes ten times longer for the survey to do the work and stuff like that. It's only the justification, but I don't think the board's really granted that very much or high intensity soil surveys, things like that.
Yeah. So those are, um, submission requirements. So if, you know, again, there may be properties where, um, an applicant feels like it's just based on the size of the property or the topography that, you know, ten, ten foot would be adequate and they can make that case to the, to the board. Um, the board may say, no. The board may say, um, you know, if you're only going to be developing this, uh, corner of a hundred acre piece, we want ten foot contours. That's fine for, you know, seventy-five percent of it, but we want
From the open space.
On the smaller. So there, it's, um, not, I guess the, the takeaway from discussion with waivers is that it's, it's not an all or nothing. Uh, if, if, especially for when it comes to things like traffic or stormwater, and if someone says, I don't want to submit a, a stormwater plan, uh, I cannot imagine the, um, rationale or, or how they would present that to the board, but that, that would be something that, that most communities would say. Uh, look, if you want to talk about the standards that you need to meet in a stormwater plan, that's one thing, but you need to demonstrate that you're going to meet the stormwater requirements. That's one of those basic, uh, criteria that we talked about. You, you need to make a yes or no decision on each one of these when, when it comes time for a vote. And the planning board meetings and the public hearing process are your chance to get more information about those projects. So that when you get to the end of the process, uh, you have, uh, the information you need to make a decision. Um, many times the applicant will be working with, uh, experienced professionals. They'll be working with the town and their staff and they'll understand what they need to do and what they need to meet, the, the standards they need to meet in order to do a project. Um, but every once in a while, uh, a project will come along where they are not able to or unwilling to meet a standard and, and those are the cases where the board needs to kind of just ask us, you know, how many of these standards do you clearly meet and how many do you not meet? And if you don't meet any of them, then that could be the basis for voting no on a project. Um, it does happen. Uh, I, I would say that's more often than not, uh, folks are willing to, to do what they need to do. They understand that there are rules that they need to abide by and, uh, projects can go through. Some are easy and some are not easy. And, uh, for whatever reason, there are just some that, um, can't meet the standards. So you should be prepared for that, but, uh, I, I would go into every project with an open mind. And again, everyone is a clean slate where you're saying, you know, just trying to step back, look at each project on its own merits, weigh it against the, the rules and the ordinance. And, um, you know, again, kind of think of yourself as a judge and you're all sitting around the table and, you know, it doesn't meet these standards. And if so, then, uh, it should get an approval. Any, any questions about, uh, we, we, we talked about the standards. I happen to dive more into those specific standards or if there are other questions about process, review stages or any of those things that kind of glossed over to make sure that we've really talked about, uh, uh, the meat of what the board is really digging into. Uh, I think a lot of the time you spend in meetings, the homework that you do in between meetings is going to be really looking at what those standards are and how they stack up. Have you guys talked about, um, uh, recusals and, and those kinds of procedural things?
No.
So I, it's a little bit beyond the scope of, uh, tonight's project, but, um, I'd be happy to, depending if there's any other questions, I'm, I'm happy to spend more time here in the subdivision ordinance, but there are other things that, uh, Ken and I have talked about. Not so much this summer, but, uh, in prior months, uh, about, uh, how to conduct board business and, uh, thinking about, uh, again, your role in the community, uh, reviewing projects and those kinds of things. Yeah.
Yeah. Just wondering if you would, um, say a little bit more about pre-development conditions. Like how the board determines when the pre-development conditions are in place and then when development has started. Say for instance, somebody had a property, they had timber harvesting done on the property. And, you know, that what they tell the town, what kind of, so how would the community have had the timber harvest done, put their own, on their own property? And then the next year, they decided they wanted to do more development for the property.
It's, it's almost like we should have verbiage in the ordinance that similar to a lot of our stuff has a three year window or five year window or something that says, you know, if you've done anything in that past, because a lot of them, a lot of the subdivisions, the timber harvesting is done before we get there. You know, they've stripped a lot. Exactly. Yeah. It's common for them to do the timber harvesting. And at the end of the day, you don't want a bunch of pine trees scattered throughout the lots because they'll be individually cut and not harvested and used properly anyways. But it's almost like you need a, a timeframe, put in that ordinance that we can look back and say, yeah, you did that within the last three years. So you got to wait your three years to come to the board or the board looks at it as an after the fact start.
Hmm.
How do you see other towns deal with that?
It, it's a tough question because, um, sometimes in site plan, you, you, you talk about what is, um, where the threshold for review is. Uh, some communities, a lot of communities have got, you know, if you're adding say five thousand square feet to a building or building a new building that's five thousand square feet or two thousand or wherever the line is. or building a new building that's 5,000 square feet, or 2,000, or wherever the line is, you have to go to site plan. Some communities will, will take that concept and say, if you're gonna be adding that 5,000 feet within a certain timeframe, whether it's three years, five years, that requires site plan, because that will avoid a scenario where someone comes in for a 1,000-square-foot building, and then the next week they come in for another, like, 1,000-square-foot addition, and they, I have literally seen six and 8,000-square-foot buildings built 1,000 feet at a time with permits that are pulled within, you know, a couple of months.
Yeah.
To get around that kind of cumulative development scenario. So a lot of communities are looking at site plans that way. When it comes to subdivision, the definition of a subdivision is set by state statute. And that is the creation of three or more lots within a five-year period. And it does not look at the activity that takes place on that lot. So if it was a hayfield, or if it was a woodlot that's been subject to harvesting, you know, for however long, and it just happens to have a timber harvesting operation within a year or two of a major subdivision application, the state statute does not look at that. And I would check with the town attorney, but I, I think that the state statute is also pretty clear in that an individual town cannot have a definition of a subdivision that's more strict than the definition that's on the state statute.
I don't think you can have a different definition than what's on the state statute. 'Cause as even major subdivision, we had a definition for major, which was anything that created a road, and we had to change that to get in conformance with the state. Any new road, we kicked into major, and they, we had to change it.
So it's, it's, it's a tough question. When, when you think about, you know, was there a house on the property? You know, sometimes like an old barn or a, a home will be torn down, and then someone will take, you know, the old homestead property and then turn it into seven or eight house lots. Or you might have a really nice woodlot that's been cut for, you know, a few generations, and it gets pretty cleaned out. I've also seen examples where people have gone in and cut the property in certain patterns, and you're like, boy, that looks like a road and a cul-de-sac at the end. But there, it's a timber harvesting operation, and they've pulled the proper permits for that. And then lo and behold, next spring, there's a subdivision plan with a curly street and a cul-de-sac at the end that happens to match the, the cut that they did. So those situations feel, as a staff person, as a former municipal staff person, they, they felt a little crummy, like, like someone was trying to get away with something. But there was nothing that I'm aware of that's on the state books that would say, you know, people can't have a longer-term plan for the property. But they, they have put these provisions in place, like liquidation harvesting, to keep people from doing things that are gonna be not good land management practices. And there's also, for larger properties, site-location permits and DEP stormwater permits that can really look back further than just a municipal subdivision can when it comes to this concept we call a common scheme of development. So if someone owns three or four properties that are all nice together, and you say, here's a project, and here's a project, and here's a project, the state may look at that and say, no, those, those aren't three projects, that's just one project, and you meet the threshold for a higher level of permitting based on that. And that, that happens fairly regularly at, at the state level. When it comes to municipal subdivisions, I, I kinda touched on the ability to revise subdivision approvals. One way that might happen is if a seven-lot subdivision gets approved and built, and there's another 20 or 30 acres under an abutting property out back that someone wants to do another subdivision, or maybe it's the original developer, gets control of that property and wants to do a subdivision. They would be also amending the original subdivision because the assumptions you made about traffic, the assumptions you made about stormwater would be changing. So they, they would have to get the new portion of that reviewed to meet the standards, but they would also have to look back at the original approval to make sure that those standards weren't gonna be impacted by the new level of development or the new level of traffic that we're gonna be using that road. So that's one way a subdivision could be amended. Another is if you're gonna create additional lots in a subdivision, that was something I mentioned. Sometimes, the idea of a field change, you know, where, where you get a subdivision approved, and the plans are designed, and you get out there, and the excavator finds a bunch of ledge, or, um, that's a pretty common one. So I'll just stick with that rather than come up with another example. But if, if you find that a, you know, maybe a fire hydrant needs to get moved 30 feet because of some kind of impediment to locating it where it's shown on the plan, that kind of change can happen as a field change, and that's often a letter that gets written to kind of acknowledge that, and gets in the project file. It would not be a field change to simply say, we, you know, there's ledge here, we can't put the hydrant in, so we're not gonna put a hydrant in at all. That, that would be something Ken would be looking for, or the town's consulting engineer who's gonna be going out and doing inspections, whoever's doing the inspection would be looking for those things to make sure that those elements are accounted for. Another kind of field change is if the plan says you're supposed to have 12 pine trees, and they end up planting 12 spruce trees, that, that's kind of a field change. That's something that you could consider in the field, but if they said, we're not gonna put 12 trees, we're only gonna put eight, that's something that may rise to the level of a change that needs to get approved by the board. Because oftentimes, when it comes to things like landscaping or hydrant location, there are either public safety issues, or screening issues, or those kinds of things. I've seen some communities that had called for evergreen trees in certain buffers to screen a subdivision from the abutting properties, and they planted, I don't know if it was mabels or oaks or something, that ended up losing their leaves, and it didn't provide the screening that the board intended. And they had to go back to the board, and the board reaffirmed, and they had to replant different trees that, to match the approval. So there are certain changes that can be addressed in the field. If it doesn't change the intent of the approval, if it doesn't change elements of that review, all those performance standards we just listed, if it doesn't impact any of those review criteria, you may find some substitutions or alternate locations that deviate, and those will be noted in the file ideally. But when it comes to new infrastructure or swapping things out, for example, you know, we found ledge again on this side of the road, and we wanna put the sidewalk on the other side rather than just putting in no sidewalk at all, that may have stormwater implications, or might have traffic implications if the sidewalk is now gonna have conflicts with intersecting streets or so forth. So you might see that kind of change come back. So it, it really depends on the level, if it's handled in the, at a staff level, or if it has to come back to the board. But my recommendation is always to make sure it's clear on the plan that, you know, this is the evergreen subdivision first amendment, or every second amendment, so that you have a clear record of changes. Because I have seen some approvals that, you know, are into their sixth or seventh amendment. Tends to happen more with commercial properties where someone's building a subdivision, and then every commercial tenant's got different requirements, different configurations, and they end up changing the stormwater, the street network for everybody who goes in. Happens less often that way for residential projects, but it, it's not uncommon, again, to see revised or amended subdivisions come back.
Could the, the board call for an amendment to a subdivision without the applicant or others initiating, so to speak, say, just a blank example, where say they, they said, oh yes, it's gonna be enough water for everyone. So-and-so lives here, they get suddenly down permanent out of their wall. They go ahead and put the subdivision in, so we got 20 more holes in the ground, and we start pumping. Well, the same neighbors next door, their groundwater goes down, maybe their well isn't deep enough, blah, blah, blah. But we, we went with the developer saying, oh, there was enough water supply, and we approved the thing. But then we find later, oh, there isn't really enough groundwater in that area to support 20 more washing machines breakers.
Sure.
You, you know, you name it. Is that something where, where a neighboring property would come to the town and say, oh, X onesy happened? And then the, the board would actually need to call, you know, discuss it with the subdivision and, and, or? What would a procedure like that be where we, you two think?
Yeah, I, I have seen scenarios where it, it's not from the board, and it's really not the board's responsibility to, it might be hard. It's, let me put it this way, it's definitely hard for some people to not drive around and, and look at projects that are being constructed or built. I, I've seen staff people do it, I've seen board members do it, and like, wait a second, that hotel is too close to the property line, or we approved a canopy that looked like this, and it, it's, it's not the same. But I think it is more common, especially during projects that are still under construction, where if you run into an example where you cannot physically locate a well on a, on a property given its proximity to septic on that property, on a neighboring property, staff could say, we're, we're not issuing any more certificates of occupancy, and we're not issuing any more building permits until the, the plan is revised to show how you're gonna safely do this and meet the state spacing requirements. If, if you were five or 10 houses into a 20 or 30-lot subdivision under construction, and the neighbor and the first people in that subdivision started to say, I don't have any more water, or my water is now brown, or whatever the case would be, I think that would be a scenario where the town could say, let's not issue any more permits, and we'll get to the bottom of this. And it's your responsibility, Mr. or Mrs. Developer, to get to the bottom of this and bring back a revised plan that's gonna show how you meet the standard, because it, it hasn't met the standard. It's much more difficult to build a subdivision and then eight or 10 years in the future if there's a water quantity or water quality issue to go back, because at that point, all of the controls that the town has, the, the town's control over development is really very directly related to issuing permits. And those are board approvals, they are building permits, and they're certificates of occupancy. And if all of those approvals have been granted, and people are living in homes, and businesses are occupied, it's very hard to go back and, and, you know, performance guarantees have been paid and returned and, and everything. It, it kinda becomes a community issue at that point as opposed to a project or developer issue. So the time to find issues, or the time to address issues is during approvals and during construction.
That's what I was thinking when you were saying, 10 houses are built, and there's a water problem, we still got 10 more to do. I've got a lot of leverage, but if all 20 houses are built, and everybody's gone except for the 20 homeowners, that's when it's, uh, usually be a civil matter if they, the developer's still around.
It could be. You know, and, and it becomes even more difficult if, if the water's been fine for five or 10 years, and then all of a sudden, everyone in that part of town or in that street has water issues to kinda go back. It's, it's very difficult to do that.
Just to get back to the pre-development conditions for a second, not to dwell on it. So should, in terms of water runoff, is there supposed to be any more water leaving the site officially after development than there was before?
Yes, especially when-
Of course, it's very hard to pump.
It, it can be.
While you have, you know, while it's pumping water out of the ground, it's just septic. So you have surface waters are being created, and we are getting the lawn, this sort of thing.
It's really a-
Water is created everywhere.
Right, it's, it's, it's less about pumping water out of the ground, and more about storm events. The idea of stormwater regulations is really about slowing water down, making sure you're avoiding, you know, that first big peak amount of water that kinda flushes off a property in a big downpour. The, the state requirements, and those are reflected in the subdivision ordinance here, are really about kind of attenuating the quantity of water running off, because it, uh, you can think about a a property that has trees and grass on it, and the water needs, it's, it's gonna soak into the ground, it's going to kinda trickle around all the rocks and stones and trees and pebbles as it goes downhill, versus a big parking lot where it can't soak into the ground. So you're immediately getting a lot more water on the ground, and the, the path is sometimes a lot straighter. So you're not only getting higher volumes of water, but water that can actually cause erosion and water quality issues. So the idea behind the stormwater regulations is to keep the amount of water leaving the site very similar to pre-development conditions. And, and that, that, that term, right, pre-development conditions mean, what, what did that property look like? And what were the water characteristics of the property before anybody built on it? And that might be a hayfield, it might be a forest, it might be a old farmstead with a undeveloped property in the back. So- Yeah, it might be a big gravel parking lot. So the, the idea of having a stormwater professional, an engineer, try and quantify, and they do that based on storm levels, quantities of water within a given hour period. And it's, it's the 25-year storm, I believe, in Acton, that they designed to. So the idea is, you know, when you get that big summer downpour, what happens to that water? Is it, is it leaving the site at a rate similar to what it did before the project got built? That's, that's quantity of runoff. And that, there's ways to do that through ditching, retention ponds, stone check dams. So if you've got a big, long ditch, you can, you can put stones in the ditch to slow it down. You can divert water so it's not in like the big water slide kind of tube running right down to the lake. You can spread it out, they have level lip spreaders. There's, there's a number of techniques to, to do that. So that's quantity. And then when it comes to water quality, if you think of, you know, water that's coming out of a rain gutter, and kinda like that fire hose effect, it's picking up a lot of silt and sediment, and maybe gouging land as well, causing erosion. There are ways to clean that water. They, they treat the stormwater, which basically- They treat the stormwater, which basically means they, through either slowing it down or filtering it through stone or other kind of media, that the water that leaves the site will be as clean as the water that would have left the site before the project got built. So it's quantity and quality when it comes to stormwater. You can do that through engineered kind of solutions, or you can do it through leaving property the way it is. Those are vegetated buffers, and those are portions of the project where if you've got some steep slopes and there's a real high potential of water causing erosion issues, very often they'll say, we're not going to build there. We're going to not disturb that soil and leave it in a state where runoff could be an issue. So that's another way to, it's not all engineering and built kind of intervention, sometimes the easiest thing to do is just say, we're going to leave it the way it is, and that'll slow the water down and clean it the way it would naturally.
A lot of that, I would think, would be an opinion. What the pre-development condition was?
Well, when you calculate it was pre-development.
I mean, inactive and pre-development conditions are forested habitat, you know, but not necessarily with our discussion.
And very often, for smaller, less complicated stormwater plans, the pre-development condition is the condition of the property when they submit the application. And that could be when the woodlot's still there, or it could be after they've cut out the right of ways or done a bigger timber harvest. That's very often how it works with smaller projects that are only going through municipal review. There are larger projects that I had kind of mentioned earlier, if they reach a threshold where the state's looking at it, the state does have more authority to look at a bigger area or to look back a little further in time than when they signed the application through that concept of common scheme of development. But the idea is, at a municipal level, there's kind of a recognition that there's, many communities don't have engineers, many communities don't have professionals who are looking at this all the time. So the bar is set, I think, appropriately low, at an appropriate level. It is important to treat stormwater, and like I said, it's one of the big ones. But for projects that are even bigger or more complex, many communities, and a lot of communities like Acton will rely on DEP thresholds and DEP capacity to do those reviews and kind of make decisions about what gets pulled in and what gets looked at.
I mean, this is a conversation that Gavin and I have, which I talked about earlier, because what he looks at with things where it's pre-development, and what I look at is two different things. I mean, there's many, many places now that are forested, very few of them are still. And so I'd say, well, pre-development, that was a field. So unless there's a timeframe in there, you have to go by, that's what I mean by throw this out in the air, because I believe a lot of this town is here, all right? I mean, 50 years ago, a lot of towns here. And I look at it like that, and I guess I'm more leaning towards something like that than Gavin, who's got a sense of more straight. I think a good rule of thumb for most projects is going to be, what is the condition of the property when the application's made? It will be the exception that you end up getting in a situation where it's looking further back or in a wider area, and that usually happens at the state and not the town level. Well, it's a thing that should be, maybe you don't want that to be specified in a zone.
It's often not. And again, I think part of it is, it would get very difficult to look back, you know, how do you, number one, picking the time. But I think, as I mentioned earlier, people, property owners do have legitimate rights to their property outside of subdivision review that include things like cutting timber or using a piece of property for agricultural purposes, you know, taking small quantities of gravel, those kinds of things that you can just do because you own property. But there are things that do require permits because they are going to have a wider impact beyond your property, or they're going to have impacts on natural systems on the property. So I could envision a scenario where, you know, if Kenny owned a piece of property for 25 years, and then I bought it, and then six months later put in a subdivision application, would you be looking, would my application be judged on what Kenny had done with his property, or would you look at it from when I submitted my application for the property? And I think that the simplest answer to that is looking at it from the time you make the application. And I don't know if I'm picking up on, you know, scenarios that have happened in the past where, you know, it has felt like people have had longer-term plans for a property that they haven't let the town in on, and it kind of feels like people maybe are trying to get away with something, or trying to pull a fast one, or skirt reasonable regulations. And that's-
The conversation with Gavin and I quite often is just how we look at it. So it really isn't like any specific thing, it's just in general, this was in the conversation that we had.
Yeah, gotcha.
Site plan narrows it down much better for parking lots and things. After 2,500 square feet of a parking area, it triggers site plan review, and that goes back three years. It specifically says your three-year window, but the subdivision, that's always a tough one.
Yeah.
You know, we see the timber harvest happen, and then we just assume, and then two, three years go by and we haven't seen an application, so we were wrong there. But that's a perfect scenario is, well, I clear cut the lot before you bought it, and then you bought it, so where, was that an agreement we had, or so?
It's like a change of ownership, too, of that.
Yeah. It's really hard, and I think that the only, the only guidance in the state statute is around lots or dwelling units that are created within a five-year period. And I may have touched on it earlier, or maybe I said it in a different way, but when it's looking at those lots and it's looking at those dwelling units created within a five-year period, it's not really looking at what else is happening on that property within the last five years, whether it's an old quarry or gravel pit, or whether it's a fully developed property, or whether it's a commercial building that's being converted to residential. Like, don't care if it's three new units in five years, that's subdivision.
You brought up, this is a thing that's been kind of, something I've been very interested in the last few years, private private business, and Acton is one of the towns that are blessed with, I've not been able to use the number of thousands and thousands of tons of, a lot of towns in Massachusetts, and just because of that proximity. And we've got a 1T6, and it's around 380 acres. And when they have done, more than likely, they would take several million tons of material from Massachusetts. And when it's all done, hold with the public, like some grass or whatever, you can do that, I don't know. But you've got a mine, and it's 600 feet in elevation, and I assume before they're done, when you get down to the ledge, there's some probably blocks to ledge, and all that in Massachusetts, too. And I think it's short sight of the town to not to address these issues, because we have three bigger beds that go to the 10,000 maximum that we've got. And I mean, those, I don't remember what the acreage is, but this one is just every day tractor trailers. And to me, that's a big problem the town needs to address, because south of us, southern Andrew, some places in Massachusetts, I've been there, the people that go out there, and they'd say, there used to be a bomb like that. There used to be this there, and it's all developed property. But I think, at least in Southern Maine, I think people are sticking ahead and saying, we're addressing that issue. Because subdivisions, I mean, there's an issue, but the whole purpose of this, I believe, is mostly the environment, protect the environment, and the waters and the land. But when you haul your land off, I don't know, I just think that needs to be addressed on its own, in all instances, whether you put a tax on it or something, or we have payers, there'd be acres, we have permanent state, there'd be a-
Open.
Open. They're on some certain grounds.
You can really qualify that as a water bottling company. If you had a water bottling company and they're taking thousands of gallons every day, but the water can replenish, may replenish. The gravel, we're not going to grow new gravel.
And you're worried about the environment, the animal habitat. This is a new question. Trucks are going all day long.
Yeah.
All day.
Yeah, I found two new pits this week that just appeared.
It's just so rare to hear on the nose and pick the same root, you know, seven, eight of those trucks a day, and that active, we weeding, weeding, you know?
Yeah.
All day. And that's what they're doing with the bigger properties, they're developing the normal material, because I don't know if the percentage of the town now could have spent hottest it in the last five years, but where the thousands of acres to have that, and it's big pieces of rock.
So the board a few years ago tightened it up. We had 10,000 yards, you were exempt from needing any permits, and 10,000 yards is impossible to calculate in a year frame and say, you know, we've seen those tractor-trailer yards, and we've calculated you're at 10,000, it'd be at November or something like that. So it's really cranked right down to 1,000 roughly. So it's more of a permitting thing now that we've got, but it's a permitted use. At the end of the day, it's still a permitted use.
I agree.
So all you can do is really narrow down the time and bond if you need to.
Kevin, you said you found two new pits this week, you knew nothing about them?
No, no.
Are they supposed to come in?
The significant amount they're hauling out, and they'll be small-term pits, probably 15,000 yards. It's landscaping is what they're calling it, but it meets our definition for mineral extraction. They're taking a mountain and moving it off a property.
But they're supposed to come in to you?
Correct, they're supposed to come in to you guys, so, and they will be, I believe.
And what we've done in the past, at least the pits that I've dealt with, we have a limited amount of stuff they can have open, and they have to reclaim it, and this and that. But this is more for, what we've dealt with is more for small contractors. But you get operations like that, that, you know, national company can mean, just, and I don't know, I think we're missing the boat, not addressing that.
And if they're going to be reclaiming in even 15 years from now, so they're supposed to keep their loom on site, and that's hard to police, too. But if they're reclaiming 15 years from now, and we're having X amount per yard set aside in today's standards, in 15 years, that may not even buy the grass seed and the trees, never mind the loom. That's going to be the hot pot. If that same company is there, then that's good. We've got a couple of small mom and pop operations, those aren't the bigger concerns, but at least those larger ones are bonded through the state, too, as well, so we've got an extra level for that, for hopefully-
They have to take a permit.
On the reclaiming, yeah, yeah.
And that probably, I don't know if they're 15, 10, 2,000 feet from the same old river now.
Yeah.
Dennis and I were talking about this thing a couple of years ago, and Dennis had the idea of a gravel tab, so to speak. That's something we've seen in any communities in the, where, you know, say it was 25 cents a yard that was going out, you know, that they would, that that money would go to the town, and they put it to certain-
Didn't we do that for water or something, and that just discouraged any water people?
Why would they discourage some mineral, actually, a payment to the town to have us like, maybe per yard or per, I don't know? Is that something you've seen?
I haven't seen it.
I know we do it in, where, you know, in whole country, you know, there's an amount per yard that, oh, what I find, you know, the town or the state pull rocks in the NCC to help revitalize these things in the future, or, you know, improve the water quality, you know, resulting of the development.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
And I think that is something that this board's still interested in looking at, and if it's something that you might be helping us with.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, there are, there's state statute that regulates impact fees, and impact fees are used for new infrastructure related to the demand that a facility would generate. So basically trying to get new development, whether it's residential or commercial, to pay for the impact it has. I've seen it very often used around transportation, intersection improvements, you know, if you got a big million-dollar intersection, traffic signal, turning lanes, that kind of stuff, the developer would pay, you know, X amount per house or X amount per square foot of commercial space.
Some are even per bedroom fee.
They, there are different ways of calculating the impacts. So I've seen recreation impact fees, where new park facilities are required because of the amount of new residents in an area, where the impact fee for a senior housing unit is less than the impact fee for a four-bedroom, single-family home, on the presumption that they would have kids using recreation as well as-
I've seen some where they had the fire department substation on that side of town, so when you build on that side of town, there's a fee, there's a-
There are, I think there's seven specific-
Areas?
Categories that you could use your impact fee for. Public safety, schools, transportation, and those kinds of things where you would need to build new facilities. You couldn't use an impact fee, for example, to pay for road maintenance or repairs to an existing road, but you could use it to pay for, if you had to build a new road to service a particular development, or you had to run utilities to serve a particular development. So I, it may not be an impact fee, it would have to be something else. And I know that at a state level, the state has the ability to do like the water tax, that was a big thing a few years ago in regard to water extraction, but that wasn't happening on a town-by-town level, that was a state taxation thing. So there may be a mechanism at a local level to do that, you just have to think about how it fits into existing infrastructure versus new infrastructure, or avoiding a situation where the town is taxing a use. Towns can certainly do fees, which is different than tax, and maybe a lot of people don't make a real big distinction, it's money you have to pay to the, to the government, but there is a difference when it comes to what local communities can do versus the state. So it's, it might be worth some discussions if that really is the community issue that it appears to be, that some thought could go into that.
You have a thousand dollars, they every acre you have open every year. So if there's three acres open, you have to tell them.
Yeah, I mean, there are other things you could do around, you know, only, you're only going to allow mineral extraction of a certain size. And that would, you know, be a little more dramatic of an intervention and it certainly wouldn't stop existing facilities from continuing to operate as long as they were meeting the standards, but it would prevent new, large, higher impact kinds of uses happening.
It's money that they work.
Yeah.
When you say they'll have no material down south, I mean, they're just going to work their way out.
Okay.
Is that something you think you would help us with?
We could definitely explore what, what some of the options are. I think I I did connect with Kenny a little bit about that last spring. I was working with the planning board for a few months before summer came along, before COVID frankly came along. And this is kind of my first opportunity to be back in town and meet new members of the board. So I think the kinds of things that I'm helping the town with, or was helping the town with and hope to help the town with are things directly related to development review, you know, when people bring applications to the planning board that they will be looked at, they'll be reviewed for completeness and then making sure that you have good information available to use meeting time wisely and effectively. Working with Ken on ordinance issues related to the things that you will be dealing with as planning board members when it comes to site plan, subdivision, zoning kind of issues. And then maybe in the future, kind of longer term, if there's other, like more planning related studies, activities that be taking place, we'd be available to help with that. And I think that looking into that kind of policy discussion, that policy issue of what are the ways or how would a community think about fees related to mineral extraction or other kinds of extractive industries? It's certainly something that would be in the scope of the agreement, the scope of work that we've got with the town. So we'd handle that, you know, coordinate it through, through Ken and his office.
So in last year's budget cycle, and we never made it to town meeting due to COVID, we set 20,000, 25,000 aside for you guys to be able to use him. And one of the first things was going to be, look at the zoning ordinance or look at the subdivision regs there. Boilerplate, as you read it, a lot of things just don't make sense and don't work for acting, but we've been able to use it. So hopefully we get to a town meeting, we'll get those funds aside and then we'll be able to use him for a resource. Otherwise, right now, I've got a little bit of money, which was able to get him here tonight. But mostly it's the developers paying for his time for him to come, for you guys to utilize him. We'll escrow money on any of the projects that we've got going on. The developer will pay that. They'll submit the applications. We send them to Ben. He does a review for it and then, which is going to be tremendous as we go through the bigger projects.
And as we talk about the introductory stuff, there's another planner who works with me at North Star Planning, Sarah Delguizo. She's worked with Ken and the board on a couple of projects in the past. So in addition to seeing my name on memos or seeing me at meetings, you could be seeing Sarah in the future as well, but she says hello, by the way.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I guess one other thought of what's not a subdivision. So the state of Maine has a great, I don't know if the word's loophole, avenue for property owners, for large property owners. You can break a lot, one lot off every five years and it's not considered a lot. You don't have to come. Then they have the gift lot, which if it's blood relative, stepchild, uncle's brother, it's a huge rein and you can just give these lots out. So if you had a large family, a large parcel, you could break off. Is there a limit to that? I don't, I don't think so. I've never heard of that.
Theoretically, no.
No, I mean, you could break 15, 16, 17 lots off and give them as gifts to your family.
Sure.
Can you sell them?
No.
No, they have to be gifts?
Once they're
Can you sell them to a family member?
No.
No, they're gifts.
Right.
Yeah, which we can't track, but.
There are, the definition of a subdivision is very simple, very straightforward. Three lots in five years is subdivision. And then
The exceptions.
There's about two pages of exceptions to that that muddy the waters all up. So.
And the last exception is if you're avoiding subdivision, then you can't.
All of these exemptions to subdivision, I won't list them all. They're in the state statute, but they are things like if you live on the property, you're allowed to create a new lot every five years that doesn't count towards subdivision. So if you own 20 acres in the next town over or 20 acres across the road from you that's on a different property, that first lot you create is going to get counted as subdivision. But if, if you live on that property, that's exempt. If you give a gift to a relative, like a close inner circle relative, you can't do like once removed and it has to be a wife, son or daughter, brother, sister.
Step opens up.
Honestly.
I think cousins in there too as well.
So there's those kinds of gifts, you know, and that's a longstanding expectation I think a lot of people have is like, hey, I've got this land and when my kids are old enough to build a house, I'm going to give them a property and and that's where that exemption comes from. Lots that are created through act of government are exempt from subdivision review. So that could be if the state built a new road through your property and created, basically turned your property into two pieces of property, that would be exempt from subdivision. If it's created by the courts, if you go through a divorce and you have to split your property with your ex-spouse, those properties are exempt from subdivision.
Does it have to be a legal conforming lot through court? Or can they create anything?
That's a good question.
Yeah, because we've got several that were through divorce decrees and they're not legal lots.
I know they don't count for subdivision.
Yeah.
So I, I think if the court created it, it's probably.
That's how we looked at it. Yeah, we're not going to.
That would be my guess. So anyway, all of these exemptions have the, a big asterisk at the bottom that says, unless the exemption is, is done with the intent to subvert the subdivision statute. So Ken had outlined a scenario where he owns a large piece of property and he's going to give a gift to his son. He's going to give a gift to his daughter. Then he's going to give a gift to his son and daughter. Then he's going to give a gift lot to his wife and his wife and son. And I have literally seen these exemptions.
Yeah, we see it all the time.
So you can, it eventually doesn't pass the straight face test and you can say to that person, you, it seems like you're doing this with the intent to avoid subdivision review and we're not going to issue more building permits. But where you draw that line is, is up to each community because it's really hard to prove that someone is doing this with the intent to avoid subdivision. The lawyers hate to get involved
Yeah.
in, in that kind of exemption in particular.
Because anybody can write a deed up on their kitchen table and go record anything you want. And then the registry sends it to the town and the town draws it on the map and
That is the most, that is the single most troublesome one, or at least the least straightforward one, because all the others, you know, the state takes an action or the court takes an action, or you've lived there on the property and it's very clear, you can do one every five years, no problem. But anybody who owns a property that's at least twice as large as the zoning ordinance can give gift lots. So that, that's the one that people who work in towns see a lot and by and large, it's not an issue. It doesn't cause concerns. People are allowed and should be allowed by state statute to give gifts. But there are certain scenarios where you just kind of scratch your head and you've, you've created 20 lots in the last two years and you only have two kids and they're both under the age of six. And that is a point at which you might have a conversation with, with a property owner and say, you, you can record as many of these lots as you want to, but you're not getting a building permit until you go through a subdivision process, because we believe you're doing this with the intent to avoid subdivision. And like Ken said, people can record whatever they want to for lots. But again, where the town has its control is when it comes to permits. Building permits, certificates of occupancy.
And quite often when they write the deed up to create this lot, it's not a conforming lot and they'll pay taxes on it for five or 10 years, come in for a permit and we'll be like, yeah, it's not a legal lot. So it's hard, it's hard for us to track it.
Yeah, so that, that does happen. Not often, and it's generally not an issue. We're kind of talking about the most egregious examples and those are few and far between.
Yeah, and of course, kind of returning to the Good Neighbor Policy design standards in terms of subdivisions. We're planning on moving this Good Neighbor Policy into the site plan review section of ordinance. Now, this pertains to commercial developments. Now, a larger subdivision could potentially be a commercial development, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so some larger subdivisions would be categorized, would still fall into the Good Neighbor Policy standards?
Yeah.
In our new, new proposed situation that we're working on.
Yes, and I think there's, there's two ways that could happen. One is if it's a a truly commercial subdivision, someone owns some property, they want to put a road in and maybe have five or six pad sites or, you know, places where they could put a two or three thousand square foot medical building or print shop or whatever it is. Those are commercial uses that are in a subdivision. So they would potentially be going through both site plan and subdivision. The other way is if it's a multi-unit building. If you've got a, a single building that's, that's going to have three or more units in it that are all created within a five-year period, that's typically falling under site plan as well as subdivision. So you could have a, a single building go through a subdivision review.
You can have an existing single building and break it into units and it goes through subdivision, which is.
Right. So very often we're talking about land, big chunks of land and lines on a map, but the definition of a subdivision can also be a multi-unit building.
So you had a fairly large subdivision, say we had a fairly large subdivision that went into the town. And I mean, it's the developer's business. He's, he's made subdivision before. Is this a commercial endeavor or is it just a subdivision that falls into the financial? Or with Good Neighbor Policy still pertaining to these developments?
Uh, if it's a, like a multi-unit building?
No, just, just.
Single family homes?
Yes, but, yeah.
15, 20?
Yeah, I mean, there are people who make their living by developing properties. So they, that is their job. Sometimes they're self-employed, sometimes they work for bigger firms. But it's really about what the use of the property is, what, what's happening on the land. Sometimes people, like if you're, if you're going to create a couple lots for your kids, you're not doing it for the money. You're creating lots for your family. But in every other scenario, almost every other scenario, you're splitting a lot off to sell the lot. Whether you're going to build a house or not, like you, you sell a house lot to pay for a kid's college, or you sell a house lot to pay for retirement. So you're making money. I don't know if that puts someone into the, like a developer or not, but there are people who do big projects and multiple big projects all over the place every year. But they would be reviewed the same way, you know, Farmer Joe who's splitting three or four lots off to pay the next four years of property taxes would, as, you know, if it's all single family homes and you're creating lots that meet the zoning standards, they would get reviewed the same way through the subdivision process. Is that what you're?
I'm just wondering if the proposed changes for moving the Good Neighbor Policy around in the zoning ordinance. We've seen passed the changes that we had proposed to the town.
Yep.
Would the Good Neighbor Policy still be applicable to a larger subdivision of residential homes? I mean, it's kind of a gray area in my head.
I had run that by a land juice attorney. It wasn't our land juice. She was at one time, but, and I mentioned commercial, she went through the roof. She said, absolutely not. That, that is not a commercial use. The development wouldn't be in the uses.
Right. So site plans are typically for non-residential, commercial things. And the Good Neighbor standards, which I haven't looked at in a couple of months, have to do with things like noise, landscaping and screening, other kinds of impacts that a commercial use would have on an abutting property. A single family home, anything going through subdivision, I think it does reference just very tangentially, you know, when it talks about meeting other, all the other zoning requirements. Those, those Good Neighbor policies are not in the subdivision ordinance, correct?
There's some similar stuff in the subdivision ordinance, but it's not loading docks and things like that.
So you need to meet the, the subdivision standards. And if you had a project that required both site plan review and subdivision, and those are a few of the scenarios that I mentioned where it's very possible that could happen, then all of those standards for site plan and subdivision would apply. So you, you could, yeah, so it's very straightforward to me, like if, if you have a project where you've got four, four unit buildings as a subdivision, that would also need to go through site plan review, you would need to meet all the Good Neighbor standards that are in the ordinance. If you're doing a single family home subdivision, whether it's three lots or 300 lots, those, based on my reading of the ordinance, the Good Neighbor standards would not apply because you're not going through site plan review for even a very large, single family home subdivision. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. I'm just curious.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think.
What the implications of our changes?
Certainly.
Good Neighbor Policy are towards subdivision since we're discussing subdivision.
The bigger the subdivision, the, the more you're going to need to do to meet the stormwater standards and the more you're going to need to do to meet the environmental requirements and the more you're going to need to do to meet all of the other standards as well. So the, the size of the subdivision will have impacts on what kind of mitigation, what kind of permitting standards they'll have to meet in addition to local requirements. But it wouldn't change the nature of what they would need to meet. It's just, it's still the same standards. It's just how are you going to meet them?
Well, there's just some of those phrases in the Good Neighbor Policy, like the, those are development, original development, where it's very, it's kind of like, you know, specific toward subdivisions almost, where there's going to be multiple buildings created that are going to change the landscape. And that's part of the Good Neighbor Policy. It's, it's a visual thing, I think, just to see. And so that's something that would no longer be applicable to the subdivision once we move this Good Neighbor Policy around. I mean, it's what I'm hearing.
I don't think it's applicable now.
But I think ordinance.
Correct.
And you want, you want the subdivision to fit harmoniously in the landscape when you're on the resource.
The intention when that was put forward wasn't for residential development.
I'm not trying to get into the whole.
No, I was just saying, you know.
In the back tonight.
Sometimes, yeah, where.
Into what we're doing.
Yeah, sometimes it's not just the words, it's where those words are
Yeah.
in the documentation. In the documentation. If it's in subdivision or site plan or both, sometimes requirements are in the zoning ordinance itself that applies to all development everywhere.
Right. It's kind of like the Good Neighbor Policy is right now. It's just in the zoning ordinance.
So theoretically, you know, in that scenario, at least in my mind, like every single thing that happens in town, from putting a shed on a property or a garage to the very largest subdivision you could imagine, would all need to meet those standards. And that is probably problematic. Again, I don't know what the intent is, and I, I don't exactly know where it lives today, or where it's going to go to. But it's important where, where it ends up. And where, what the, again, it's not just the words. It's, do you want those to only apply to commercial projects? Or do you want them to apply to commercial and residential? Or do you want them to apply to every single thing that happens? And, and depending on where you put it in the ordinance, any of those scenarios could be possible.
I guess this last thing is the appeals. And you guys will make a decision that somebody's not going to be happy with. They've got 30 days to file a complaint in Superior Court. So that'd be some serious money at that point.
Yep. Some people will appeal approvals. Some people will appeal.
Denials.
Denials. And my advice is, is not to worry about what happens after the decision that the board makes. It's really to focus on how the decision is made, how you justify your own votes. And if, you know, no one, no one in the town is ever going to tell you how to vote. And, and I don't think like you will be telling each other how to vote. It's going to be up to each person to make up their own mind based on the standards. So we're, we're not going to tell you how to vote, but we, it's our job to make sure you have the information you need to make an informed vote, and that you are going through the process in a way that no matter what happens after the approval, you'll be able to say it was done with integrity, and it followed the rules. And if that's the case, you know, sometimes you just got to let the chips fall where they fall. But the, the role of the board is to make decisions on projects based on the wording in front of them. And as we've just been talking about, sometimes that wording needs to change. Needs change, things evolve, new types of things come up. So ordinances are always changing. They're always under review. But, you know, the best you can do is, is with the, the guidance and the, the book you have. Appeals.
Yeah.
So sometimes you, you may see a project come back. If, if an appeal is, it's appealed to the court, and sometimes the, the judge will send it back to the board to, it's, it's very often when that happens, it's a procedural type of issue, as opposed to, we believe you made the wrong decision based on the information. It's more of how did you make your decision?
Usually it's you need to relook at this and this. They don't.
Did you follow the correct procedures? Did you look at all of the information that you had?
Yeah.
Those kinds of things.
They never tell you, you should have done this, this, and this. Send you back to relook at that and do it again.
Yeah, so it's.
Do over.
It's not like, you know, a Superior Court decision gets appealed to the main Supreme Court, and the, the Supreme Court say, you, you decided incorrectly, we're going to change the result. No court is going to say, you denied this improperly, so we're going to give the guy his approval. It's, it's more like, we believe you denied it improperly, so go try it again with these changes.
Supreme Court kick it all the way back to the planning board.
Right. So sometimes, sometimes it changes the result, sometimes it doesn't. But the role of the court is to make sure that the, the process is fair, people's rights are represented, and that is the rights of the people who own property, but also the rights of people who are nearby, or the rights of the town sometimes overall. Ken's turned off the computer. But if there's any last questions that we have to talk a little more. But if not, I, I think it's, it's, I know you guys have had a few meetings in the last month, and you've seen some smaller items come through.
Yeah, we haven't really done much. I think tonight was the only vote we've done, and that was to get a chairman and vice chair. So.
Okay.
We're back on track.
Good. The, the, the best way to, you know, familiarize yourselves with these, you know, I see a few familiar faces. So it's, it's just to get involved and start seeing some projects and learn where certain standards apply and where others don't. So congratulations to all the new board members. I hope you enjoy your time on the board. It's, it's a good service to the community.
Any more questions? So we're ready for a.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, thank you. Chair can make the motion to adjourn if he wants. Oh, sure. Oh, but you got to.
I heard a second.
Yeah, I heard a second. All in favor? Here we go. Thank you, guys.
All right.